Good afternoon. A good call, this special meeting of Friday, March 13th, Board of Education to order at this time. We need a motion to approve.
Let me go ahead and take roll call.
Oh, we need to have roll call first.
Fernando Amalza.
Here.
Kelly Alter.
Here.
Kate Cottarella.
Here.
Shelley Jarno.
She's here electronically.
Ted Long.
Here.
Michelle Stecker.
Here.
Lucy Lattie Barcunas.
Here.
Okay, great. With the quorum and the full board here established, we will now take a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
Move to approve the special meeting agenda for today.
Second.
Ms. E.
Mr. Amalza.
I am.
Mrs. Alter.
Hi.
Mrs. Cottarella.
Hi.
Mrs. Jarno.
Hi.
Dr. Long.
I am.
Mrs. Stecker.
Hi.
Mrs. T. Barcunas.
Hi.
All right. At this time, I'm going to pass the microphone over to Superintendent Qualman.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge some of the folks in the room. I want to thank Public Health Director Heath Harmon, who's in the room. He's been working tirelessly for two weeks, seven days a week, staying ahead of this process, guiding us as to what to do, and all the other organizations and health organizations in the county. So Heath, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you being here too for our efforts. And then the district leadership team members who are in the room, who have been instrumental helping us, particularly with the communications plan, the entire communications team, thank you guys for all the volume and clarity of information that you've helped distribute in the last few days. We couldn't have done this without you guys. And then any interested parties in the room, appreciate you guys being here as well, all your dedication, a lot of folks from Eagle County Schools in the room, so thank you very much. Is Shelley still on?
Was making a little stat.
Okay. I was trying to figure that out. Well, let's jump in here and talk about what our process has been. For the past two weeks, we have been participating closely with a lot of different government agencies, closely aligned with Eagle County Public Health, also coordinating information from the Center for Disease Control, Colorado Public Health Department, as well as the Colorado Department of Education. So the decisions that we've been making, the things that we have been communicating, are all in alignment with what these other organizations are recommending. We've increased our prevention work in schools and our buses. We've been educating staff and students about how to increase and improve hygiene, and we've stepped up sanitation in all of our facilities. We've also developed supplements to our pandemic plan, responding and evolving as the situation has changed. We've included e-learning infrastructure and have now developed some recommendations for management of personnel issues and facility preparedness, and we're going to get into those a little bit more today. In the last few days, we've demonstrated flexibility with attendance requirements, respecting the decision of parents. We've tried to keep schools open as long as we possibly could, but in the last couple of days, we've started to hear concern from parents, and we've been accommodating of their desire to keep kids home and allowing excused absences, not asking for doctor's notes, trying to find ways to let parents understand that they have the final decision with their kids, and we'll try to be accommodating to that in this time of crisis. But now, we recognize that we're at a step where we need to limit social contact, and that means that we're going to have to take some more dramatic steps to reduce the infection curve. So it's time for ECSD to take more dramatic measures. Today, I'm asking the board for three things. I'm asking the board for authority to close schools for an extended period of time. I'm asking the board to access reserve funds to help mitigate the expenses related to COVID-19 closures and infrastructure and supply changes to our system, and I'm asking the board to define our e-learning transition. With the board's consent this afternoon, effectively Monday, March 16th, we will order schools closed in alignment with Eagle County Public Health's order to refrain from group gatherings through April 8th. That is about three weeks. At that time, we will reevaluate whether or not schools are safe to reopen. Our priorities in this process, first and foremost, continuity of education. Our primary mission is to educate the youth of Eagle County. Even though students are not within the school walls, we can facilitate learning. We have been working towards one-to-one device ratios in this district for a couple of years now. Our teachers and students are technologically savvy, and they can handle this transition. To that end, we will migrate our mode of instruction from classrooms to remote learning for about 92% of our students. The 8% without Wi-Fi access, we will develop take-home materials or printed consumables that can be returned to school and refilled weekly. Within that 92% who have Wi-Fi, there are many who do not have usable devices to access Wi-Fi. So we have been, starting today, checking out Chromebooks to kids through our Connect to Learn program. So just as they would check out a library book, we're sending them home with a usable device so that they can interact with their teachers in this time off. Next Monday, we are prepared to train teachers, online, mind you, how to develop e-learning lesson plans and to interact with students electronically. We have a website that I'm not prepared to demonstrate right now because we don't have the electronics hooked up, but our website is live. It's called ECS learns. You can see that through our ECSD eagleschools.net website. That has portals for students, teachers, and parents to understand what this process and transition will look like and outline for them what those expectations mean. We're asking for students and parents to have patience and to look for lessons and content from teachers starting Tuesday, March 17th. They're going to need a day on Monday to get that training and to prepare some lessons for the very next day, so we're going to need a little time to turn around. I think it's unreasonable to expect an instant transition from a traditional in-school model to the electronic model, so they've been thinking about it for two weeks. We've been planning the infrastructure. We've got the training in place for Monday, so give us a day to get those pieces in place, and then on Tuesday, we'll start to have content available. Teachers will have consistent office hours through this process to be determined by their print, to be determined in collaboration with their building principals, and those office hours will be posted so that students and parents have access to their teachers in this time. We intend to leverage the flexibility that on-time, that online learning allows. We do not intend to force the traditional school structure and schedule into the e-learning environment. Online classes are intended for asynchronous learning, and that's what we intend to leverage. I'm also asking the board today to allow access to reserve funds. We do not intend to spend any more than allowable through state statute and not below 10% of our unassigned reserves, meaning that we will still have a healthy reserve in the event we need it in the future. The only reason that we're able to do this is because this district has been fiscally conservative, financially responsible, and transparent. For years, we have earned awards through our finance department for responsible record-keeping, responsible spending, and transparency. So we are set up to handle a situation like this, and I thank Sandy Muchler and her team for putting us in this position. So the board has been reflecting on these options around how we might spend these dollars since Wednesday. I proposed some options at that time in our regular board session, so in the past couple of days, they've been reviewing that. I've also forwarded them some more accurate financial scenarios that we've come to recently as we've been proposing this situation. Our purpose now is to provide the board a forum to give me feedback on these ideas. I need to solicit and record their feedback and make appropriate adjustments to the plan that I've provided to them. To touch on some of those planned parts, I'd like to share with the audience and the board some of those details. First, unemployment benefits. School closure for three weeks means many of our employees will be out of work. That includes transportation, food service, custodians, school secretaries, registrars, health assistants, and paraeducators, and I'm probably missing a couple of groups. It is our belief that through cost savings from closed schools and through budget tightening, we can continue to pay these employees for the three weeks that school is closed while they are on forced leave. This keeps their benefits active, health insurance viable, ensures financial security for their families, and peace of mind through this crisis. They're going to have enough to worry about without worrying about no checks, no income, and no insurance. These employees take care of us and our children every day, and in this time of crisis, we believe we need to take care of them. Ultimately, we believe state and federal agencies will allow COVID-19-related unemployment to qualify for employment benefits, but at this time, we can't assure that, but we are hopeful that that will occur. Our decision to keep them on the payroll serves as a bridge between the immediate loss of work and wages and the delayed response time we anticipate with government assistance. We are all in this together, and our actions need to model that. We also need to address paid leave. Even when schools close for three weeks, we must understand that the timeline of impact of COVID-19 outbreaks is not three weeks. We're talking about a six-to-12-week cycle. So our attempt to close schools is intended to flatten the curve in severity in Eagle County, borrowing from Heath Harmon's language of one of the primary goals of public health, we're trying to flatten the curve. But that doesn't mean in three weeks that everybody's going to be healthy. We are going to continue to have staff impacted through the end of this school year related to this incident, and we have to plan accordingly. It will be quite easy for people who are self-quarantining or who are diagnosed or who have colds or flus who also need to self-quarantine to burn through their 10 to 14 days of paid leave. We fully anticipate that that's going to happen for many of our employees. But when those folks make a decision to stay home to self-quarantine, they are acting in the best interest of themselves and the rest of the organization. They should not be expected to carry that full burden for those leave days. Therefore, the recommendation that I've proposed to the board is that the district pay the first five days of COVID-related leave days for all employees, the first five days. We can get into the details of what the COVID-related leave days are in more detail later. I also want to talk about existing safety nets that we have in our system regarding leave. I'm recommending that the district not access unused accrued paid leave days from prior years, and I'll provide the rationale. Many employees have worked for years without taking leave, demonstrating high degrees of professionalism and commitment to this organization. They should not lose those accrued days due to unforeseen pandemics that impact the whole organization. Those accrued days should be maintained for personal and family use in the likely event that they will need them in the future. The district also does not intend to access sick bank, which some employees voluntarily join, donate days to. Not all employees are engaged in that process. The rationale for not using sick bank is employees contribute to that to provide a safety net for themselves and their colleagues. That bank is limited with only about 400 days available. Those accrued days should be maintained for unforeseen emergencies that will develop outside of this pandemic for many of our employees in the future. I'm advising that the board create a separate sick bank for COVID-19 absences that result after this three-week closure in the event that we have staff that are, have used up their personal paid leave days and the five that we're covering at the beginning. Again, we're all in this together. I'm sure a primary concern for folks is calendar implications for school. The district is required by the Colorado Department of Education to demonstrate good faith to make up lost instructional minutes. Therefore, we will need to add minutes and days onto the calendar, likely through June 12th. In the event that the amount of lost instructional minutes cannot be made up by adding minutes or days within reason through June 12th, the district will apply for a waiver through CDE to lift those instructional minute requirements. Ultimately, this is new territory for our district, for our state, for our country, and for the whole planet. We need to exercise patience, civility, and compassion, and take care of each other in this time of challenge. We're trying to embody that in our organization. With your approval of the proposed motions, we can finalize our plans and take care of our students and staff. We look forward to collaborating with principals, parents, teachers, the Eagle County Education Association, their representatives, to finalize our plans. So at this point, Madam President, I would like to ask the board to consider the motions in front of you, to provide feedback or suggestions on the details outlined in my comments and in the documents provided, so that as a leadership team, we can make adjustments to those plans and be prepared Monday to hit the ground running and take some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Phil.
Yes.
Can you explain, so if a teacher were expected to continue online learning, aren't they working? So how does that, how does that all work, or what's your thought?
So the question was, if teachers are creating and working online, isn't that working? And the answer to that is yes. And when we talked earlier about leveraging the flexibility of e-learning and asynchronous learning, we also talked about the need for specific office hours. Our initial plan would call for teachers to work a half-day with two hours of office hours available to interact with students and parents as needed. So that means that they're working a half-day, leaving a half-day that we can then reassign in those make-up days in June. So we're going to try to make it so that the time committed in this period when school is closed will still accrue enough contract time that we can transition it to those days in June.
So during the school closure, everyone's still getting their paycheck?
Yes.
That's, that was the clarification. And then it'll be worked out in the details, a lot of details are going to be worked out on the fly as it progresses, but depending on what the situation was, unemployment insurance and the contract time that extends into June, it will eventually all get straightened out.
Yes.
Okay.
At this time, I'm prepared to take notes or answer questions from board members, take your recommendations, listen to your suggestions or just thoughts that you're having around the proposed ideas, so that our team can process those and work with Eagle County Education Association on Monday and develop our final actions.
I have a question, Phil. I was, I'm from Colorado Mountain College, and we work very closely with the school district, mostly on dual enrollment classes. Has there been any discussion about how you would like Colorado Mountain College to pursue the students who we have, you know, some of them come to the college from the high school. Most of our classes, though, are taught in the high school. Are you assuming that those classes won't be taught at the high school, but maybe there's, we're trying to make arrangements with CMC to offer the classes after next week. We've been on spring break this week, but we've extended our spring break one more week, and then the plan is, the three weeks after that, to have every CMC class be run in the online format. I wonder how you want to collaborate with the college on those types of situations?
Yeah, I think that the transition to online for CMC for our dual enrollment classes fits right in line with the work that we're doing, so I would concur with that maneuver, and I would not advise that our students attend classes here or at CMC for the duration of this closure.
I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and comprehensive nature of the plan that's laid out here, and you touched a bit on communication with families and what we can expect. I think communication's been pretty transparent so far. I'm wondering if you can take us through a little bit more deeply how families can expect to hear about their school and classroom-specific expectations in the coming weeks.
We've got a document already prepared that will finalize with the amendments that we hear in this meeting, that will go out as soon as this meeting is over. So we want parents to understand what we're thinking as soon as we possibly can. We do need to recognize that teachers will be doing a lot of this planning on Monday, and I don't want to get ahead of them in terms of what they'd like to create. We've had this idea in their heads for about a week now, starting to imagine what it's going to look like for them. So we'll also be letting them know about the two hours of office time, two hours of time in the development and execution of lessons. So I think that next Monday and Tuesday, we would be able to better address that question.
So to get back to Shelley's point a little bit, because I'm still slightly confused. So for the next couple of weeks while school will be shut down, teachers are obviously going to be working and are going to be paid. At that point, when school, if school comes back into session, that paid time off would come out if teachers can no longer come back into the classroom because they're either ill or self-quarantined? And is there any opportunity there to, for those teachers, particularly on self-quarantine that aren't necessarily sick, to kind of continue with that online piece too, and so sort of not have necessarily be paid time off? If that makes any sense?
Yeah, absolutely. We've actually had a teacher self-quarantined this week that taught a lesson from home online. So we've got precedent for that. We know it can happen, and over the next two or three weeks, as we're developing this skill set, I think we can continue to leverage that through the end of the school year as staff need to continue to be out. Shelley, did you have a follow-up question?
I just wondered what kind of, I mean, I realize this is going on at other districts, but what are sort of the youngest kids, you know, our kind of kindergarten, first grade, second grade, before, I mean, it just seems like, is online learning an option with that group, or?
That's a, that's a good question. It may not be as, as easy for those younger students as it is for the older students, and we recognize that. That's why we are making plans that do not expect 100% transition. There is a lot of software out there that makes sense for the young kids, iStation, footsteps to brilliance, DreamBox, so they understand those software programs, they've been working with them already, and they can access those from home. But we also intend to send home books, send home a uniform cover sheet in paper form for assignments that go home, packets that go home, workbooks that go home, to help guide students and parents through this process. So to your question, no, we don't anticipate that there'll be 100% online, and we will supplement with other materials that are sent home weekly. Ms. Amalza?
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions that I can't stop thinking about, and I don't know if it's related to Eagle County Schools only, or it's also related to the county in general, and that's something that I feel are, some of the community members might hopefully have still the same questions, but how is the, the missing of the students missing school and the schools being closed, how is that going to impact the employment or the parents that don't have a babysitter or that can't take care of the kids because they have to go to work? How is that going to be impacting our society, I guess?
That's a fair question, and the answer to that is unknown at this time. There are dozens of districts around the state and hundreds around the nation that are in the same situation. I think it's going to require communities coming together, neighborhoods, friends, families coming together to figure out situations where they can help each other in the childcare needs in the coming weeks, and it will certainly impact employment and productivity and likely incomes for many families. So that's, it's a concern, certainly, but our primary concern and reason for doing this is for the health and safety of everyone and to flatten that curve of transmission and to end this as quickly as possible.
Do we have a planning place to keep taking care of the kids that count on that free and reduced lunch every day?
We do. In the communication that will go out this afternoon, we identify distribution points at Battle Mountain High School and Eagle Valley High School daily during school days between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., where we will distribute lunches as needed to those who are free and reduced lunch. So just so you know, it's now, the way we're been through, it's now a summer program, so we don't even care that they're free and reduced at all. So Chris Del Sordo, Director of Nutrition, and he was just clarifying that federal laws around distribution of lunches have been modified to accommodate this process that we've established. Typically, that would not be an okay model, but considering the situation, the feds have lightened up on their requirements, and this is now in line with their expectations.
I'm wondering if there's any more details available on how that program might operate? Is it going to kind of be bagged lunches that are pick-up and goes, so we don't have a lot of people in and out? And then also, I, there's been a lot of questions from community members that are really concerned about this. I don't know if there's a need or if it would even be safe to consider support from volunteers or anything like that in helping with that program?
Possibly. We have other staffing details to work out. Some of our support staff, classified staff, who will be out of work, will have an opportunity to volunteer, to, well, I shouldn't say volunteer, to opt-in to continue, continue working for the organization, and that could be one of those jobs where they're assigned. And I think we can certainly consider collaboration with Food Bank or other organizations in the county, because I think these food efforts are going to expand beyond, or the needs are going to expand beyond those that we've identified in the school system. So we've been thoughtful in the last 24 hours about consolidating our produce and our commodities from our various school locations, where we have separate kitchens, into centralized locations where we can draw from those and try to get them distributed through our lunch program primarily, but if any of those are perishable, we'll try to get those to Food Bank as quickly as we can so that we don't have any food waste.
I also have to assume that the communication to families is such that, you know, we're closing down the schools, it's not necessarily an opportunity for kids to sort of go congregate. I know that, I think Scarce was one of the first school districts to close down, and the next day, the kids were like, all out hanging out at the mall, and they were all just sort of out and about doing their thing, and it was sort of like, what's the purpose of shutting down the schools if everybody's just going to go about their sort of normal lives? It keeps, obviously, teachers may be particularly safer and gives people the opportunity to stay home that want to, but, and obviously, we can't, you know, dictate where students are going to be and what they're going to do, but I hope the communication to families is like, look, we're really trying to slow the spread of this, and, you know, kids going out and hanging out and, you know, congregating is not the way to help this.
Can you repeat the question?
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate the comment. Kelly's comment was really related to the intent of the county order on social gatherings and the intent of our closure, and making sure that parents and students understand why we're doing this and encourage them to avoid those social gatherings even when we're closed. And we do have a message about that in the communication that's set to go out this afternoon. I think that what will really help us in enforcing that is just a community expectation and community pressure to enforce that intent and to take it seriously if we really intend to flatten out the curve and shorten this as much as we can.
Thank you. I do have another question. Do you foresee the community panicking after receiving the news that the school might close? Let's say that, I hope that I'm not the only one that's seen those videos on YouTube that people just go about and buy toilet paper for some reason, and do you foresee any, any of that or type of reactions from people after seeing that the school is going to close for a certain amount of time?
We've postponed this decision as long as we possibly could, and there are many, many districts in Colorado and even states that have shut down schools completely, so I don't think this order will come as a surprise to anyone. I think the folks that are of the mind to panic have already done so. I don't think the news of our closure is going to trigger any activity like that. I think that what will be a result of this order are phone calls to friends, family, neighbors, colleagues, trying to develop some networks in which to, to support each other with childcare during the time of this closure. I expect that to be the predominant response.
I'm not really sure how to express this comment, but...
Go first, didn't you?
Just a second, Shelley. I'm concerned about the long-term academic, you know, impacts that this might have to our students. I think it's, I think, honestly, I feel like we're doing all that we can, offering an online portal for them to continue, you know, contact with their instructors, and in some cases, sending home the books and materials for them, you know, to study. If we're planning on, if the school is planning on being shut for three weeks, I feel like there, there must be a way to assess, how did they do with those online assignments? How did they do with the things that were sent home? And I'm concerned that in some situations, if the students weren't able to do those assignments, or they come back and we end the school year too quickly, they won't be prepared then for the next, you know, the next semester. So I don't know if there's been any kind of, you know, a de-escalation in academics, task force, or subcommittee, or anything like that, but I'm concerned about making sure that those impacts are not, not long-term, and making sure that we're, we're still ensuring the academic rigor that they would get if they were coming to the class. So I don't know the solution to that, but it's just a concern. I feel like we have to make sure that we address that going forward. I feel like we have to make sure that we address that going forward.
Thanks, Dr. Long. I think we could, we should be aware that we just completed mid-year assessments in January and February. We would also be doing end-of-year assessments in May. That's benchmarking assessments through, I'm not going to get into the jargon, but through various assessment vendors. And the value of those is that we have been able to chart progress from August to mid-year, January, February, and then get an endpoint check at the end of the year. And I think through that process, we can assess what the impact of this three weeks has been, and it also gives us good diagnostics to consider where we need to start in the fall.
Shelley?
Shelley, did you have another question?
Well, actually, my question was financial, and I'm noticing that that's like the next point, so I can wait. I don't know.
Yeah, in the packet that board members saw, there were some projections of costs, so they understand what we're working with. Again, with the finance department, we've worked through different scenarios to see what we might be able to afford in terms of helping with unemployment benefits and paid leave. The district will experience some savings from closed schools in terms of food service, transportation costs. So with those savings and with additional belt tightening and accessing reserves within reason, I think that we can accomplish the goals that we've put forward. Part of the finance request that I asked of the board is not a blank check. I've written into that motion checks along the way where I would be reporting back to them at spending increments of $250,000. And if they want to change that increment, I'm open to that. But the purpose of writing that into the motion to access reserves is so that they can be very aware of the priorities for our spending and have transparency in how we are utilizing those funds.
If things go back to normal and kids go back to school in April, have we considered canceling that April break we have at the end of April?
We have not talked about that yet. I think at this point, families probably have a lot of plans around that. So I think we could talk about it. We might survey families to see if they would be willing to forego that break in favor of more days in June, but we can cross that bridge if we need to. I see a lot of folks in the audience that have questions, and I do want to make sure that you have an opportunity to ask those, but we don't have that written into the board agenda today. This is an opportunity for the board to communicate to me their thoughts. I'll stay after this meeting as long as I need to. Executive team can stay as long as we need to, to answer your questions. So please know that we'll address your concerns.
All right, so I just want to acknowledge this is a frustrating and scary time with lots of unknowns and breaking unknown ground, and that to have faith that our plan will evolve in a rational manner and to say, you know, by Tuesday, we'll know how the learning is going to go. We have been thinking about these things for a long time, working on one-to-one, working on e-learning, thinking about it for a week ahead of time, so it's not a complete shock to the staff. We luckily have the summer lunch program experience so that we're not, for the first time, trying to distribute food out to the community. We get a lot of experience in all these areas, and we have a really super-strong team working on it. And the communications team is going to continue to work overtime, I'm sure, to continue to, with updates as they develop. And we take the guidance from public health and all of the other health professionals that have brought us to this point. So we're going to just continue, continue to watch your email, continue to stay in touch with your neighbors. Don't spread unrealistic rumors. Try to deal only in facts, please. That's really what's important. This is a precautionary measure taken to flatten the curves, to end this quicker, so that everyone can get back to normal in a timely manner as much as possible. And we just appreciate the community support and all the work from the staff and the district. I'm just really impressed and overwhelmed, honestly, by the dedication and the focus and the calm and the good work, the amazing work that I've seen happen here from the administration at Eagle County Schools. So I thank them. And we may need a little time to do some reading and just review these motions before us, before we take an actual vote. If you could just be patient there, we'll have to check in with the board members on how long, since this has all been developing, we haven't had our usual time for reading at home, and we'll move forward as quickly as we can here.
Thank you. Board members did receive these last night and some additional communications throughout the day as our financial scenarios have developed. So give you guys a few minutes to look at. Does anybody need additional time to review them?
Does anybody have any additional questions?
Any additional questions? Clarifications, suggestions?
I do. It's not more, well, I guess, a little bit of a question on it too, but just before this meeting, I was joined in a phone meeting with the Spanish-speaking community for COVID-19. And there's a lot of questions related to what's actually on social media and what actually is happening and the impact that it's causing that to our non-English-speaking community, that they are receiving mixed signals. I did have the honor to be on that phone call with Birch Baron, the emergency manager, and a lot of other folks. That phone line was just very busy. There was a lot of people trying to make it correct or make that positive or the correct information out to our non-English-speaking community. But I am a little bit concerned in that aspect of how are we communicating with the Eagle County Emergency Management and the Eagle County Schools, and more about what the overall plan would be if we had a massive outbreak of people freaking out because they don't speak the language and don't understand what the COVID-19 actually is and does? And that's basically more of my--
Yeah, I understand. So two answers to that. First, we have been participating in daily situation report meetings directed by Heath Harmon, Birch Baron, and the Department of Public Health and Environment. So we're on those calls every day, staying as informed as we possibly can about what's happening in the county. Every communication that we have put out is translated in real time, so we're giving instant translation in everything that we do. The communication that we'll distribute this afternoon is already translated and ready to go. If we need to make amendments to that based on your suggestions, we will code those in our notes and make sure that those translations happen instantly before we send them out. So it is a priority for us as an organization that every communication that we send out is in English and Spanish, and we will continue to do so. If you have ideas or suggestions about how our communication department might adjust our modality or our message to have more influence or have a calming impact in our Latinx community, please let us know, and we can make those adjustments. We do have the services of Eric Martinez, who is a tremendous translator for us, both of our, the specifics of our content messages, but also, he's very thoughtful and mindful of the intent, and he tries to make sure that that intent is communicated just as clearly in Spanish as it is in English. So if you've got recommendations, please let us know.
Similarly, top of mind for me is support and services for some of our most vulnerable families, and I appreciate Fernando, you speaking a bit to language and making sure our communication is really effective. I come back to communication mechanisms and just want to encourage us to try to think creatively when we're spreading the word about how families can stay up to speed on academics. I don't know if there's ways through the food program that's going to be developed to message along with that, potentially work with neighborhoods to help get the word out about food services that are available during this break, and then also maybe tying in academic supports. And another thought there, I don't know if there'd be an opportunity within our kind of guardrails of safety to think about delivery, working maybe with a couple of community hubs to be able to get food, and then with that, maybe some messages about academics out to certain neighborhood hubs.
Certainly, we're open to evolving our communication plan, our education, food service plan, in any way that folks see fit. Whatever's going to be most effective, we're certainly willing to make modifications and be responsive. Any other questions, comments, or suggestions?
I see three resolutions here: 12, 13, and 14. Is that correct? All right.
Three resolutions. So one of them is granting the superintendent authority to close for an extended period of time. The other one is to define some of the parameters around our e-learning program, and that's a requirement of the Colorado Department of Education. If the board hasn't taken action to acknowledge an e-learning program or recognize that we're making efforts to develop one, it's much less likely that CDE will let us count the minutes that students spend in that process towards our total that's required at the end of the year. So that's really a technical piece that we need to have for CDE. And then the third one is the authority to access finances that have been in reserve, but not more than 10% of our unassigned fund balance. Okay? Those are the three.
I don't want to open Pandora's box, but the message that you sent about potentially providing some childcare to sort of essential workers in the healthcare field, is that a difference? Is that something we would discuss with a different line? Or is that, I don't understand how that fits in.
That is something that we're going to need to consider when schools close. And we don't have that on the agenda as an action item, but that's something I would solicit the board's opinion on. Since it's not on the agenda item, I'll probably send you information on that later. I can tell you that it's related to a conversation that we had on Wednesday. In a nutshell, the medical capacity in our community is maxed. They're at surge capacity right now, and in the event that students are staying home who are kids of doctors and nurses, it's going to impact their ability to be at work. So we need to figure out if we can be of assistance in lending facility or manpower to provide some type of supervision for those students. Again, it's not an action item right now, but I'll solicit your opinion on that at another time.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so just to reference the policies, we're looking at EL 14, Education Program, educational program. EL 19, school safety. EL 8, fiscal management. And EL 19, oh, EL 1, global executive constraint. The other, we're doubling up on some of these policies, referencing that. I'm just confused on the technicality here of the motions. Are we ready to vote on these resolutions? Any more questions, concerns, Shelley? Anything else you want to add? Or we're going to move forward with the motion? Uh-huh. It's all clear to me now. It's all clear to me now. I will move to approve Resolution Number 201920-12 of the Board of Education of Eagle County School District, RE 501J, addressing coronavirus, and Resolution Number 2019-13 regarding e-learning. Is there a second by Mrs. T. Varcunas? Further comments or questions? Missy?
Mr. Almondza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Giorno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, and then I'm going to move to approve Resolution Number 201920-14 of the Board of Education of Eagle County School District, RE 501J, authorizing the superintendent the ability to assign appropriated funds. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Long, seconds? Further comments or questions? Missy?
Mr. Almondza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Giorno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
All right, well, I think our staff has some work to get done now, so I will thank everyone once again for all their work in the past and in the future, and beg your patience and calm in the testing. We did receive an email from public health that says for non-light-threatening systems, remember to call first and stay home and get that advice first, and leave the hospital beds for life-threatening symptoms. And again, calm and patience. I appreciate it from everyone. Anything else? Mr. Quammen, you want to finish up?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, anybody in the audience that has questions, if you have specific questions about finance, Sandy Muchler is here after the meeting. You can talk to Sandy. If you have specific questions about facilities, we've got Aaron is here, and so Fuentes in the back row. Technology questions can go to either Todd back in the corner. Todd Shaheen is Executive Director of Technology. We've got Brian Bruger. Brian has been developing our online website. He can answer your questions about the e-learning platform. Communications questions, Dan Dougherty and his team are over here, so if you have communications questions, anything specific, general, you can bring to me, but those guys are your experts. Chris Del Sordo is here as well, so food service, food distribution, you can talk to Chris. Again, you guys appreciate your patience, appreciate our care for all of our employees, and know that we're in this together. Sandy?
Can you please clarify, what's the order?
The order for not, for avoiding social gatherings is until April 8th, and we're going to keep schools closed until that time. Okay, thank you.
Meeting adjourned.